...of the Mobile City Planning Commission, I would like to take a moment to review our general operating procedures. Our meeting is divided into two sessions, the public hearing session and deliberation session. In the public hearing session, an application or group application on the agenda is called. The applicant makes his or her presentation. Commission members ask questions, if any. Members of the public make their comments. Only four people may speak for an agenda item or project and four against. Each speaker is limited to five minutes, subject to questions by the commission. After four minutes, a loud beep will indicate one minute left to speak. And at this point, please summarize your comments. After all opposition speakers have finished, the applicant will be given time to respond. If you do intend to speak, please come to the podium, speak into the microphone, and give your name and address for our minutes. Please direct all comments to the commission only and not to the applicant or the audience. And please remember to speak directly into the microphone. On routine applications, the applicant may simply raise his or her hand if there are no objections to the staff recommendations. I will then announce that the applicant is in full agreement with those recommendations. If there are any questions, the applicant will be given an opportunity to respond. After hearing all applications, the commission will go to deliberation session. In the deliberation session, commissioners discuss each application with input from the staff necessary, but with no input from the audience. The commissioners then vote on each application, and results of voting can be learned from the planning department. If some issue arises in the deliberation session that were not addressed in the public hearing, the chairman has the discretion either to allow additional comments pertaining to those issues in order to resolve them, or call for the application to be held over for discussion at a future meeting. Occasionally, one or more commission members may recuse themselves from discussing and voting on a given application. A recusal does not necessarily mean the member is directly involved with the application or the applicant. Depending upon the circumstances, ethical rules may require a recusal when there is only the slightest appearance of a conflict of interest. If a regular member recuses, a supernumerary will vote in their stead unless both supernumeraries are already voting due to absences. The planning commission makes final decisions subject to appeal on subdivisions, planning approvals, plan unit developments, PUDs. The planning commission only makes recommendations on zones applications, with the city council making the final decision. Please turn off or mute all cell phones at this time. Commission staff, please remember to turn on your microphone when speaking. Roll call, myself present. Mr. John Valas.
Here.
Ms. Shirley Sessions.
Here.
Mr. Alan Cameron.
Here.
Mr. Taylor Atchison.
Here.
Mr. Matt Anderson.
Here, here.
Mr. Nick Omburger.
Here.
Ms. Beth Rich.
Here.
Here.
Mr. Cart Blackwell.
We have a quorum.
Starting item number one, our holdovers. North side of Government Street, Griffith subdivision, tentative recommended for denial.
Yes, I'm Rel with Poly Surveying here on behalf of the applicant. At the last meeting, we took a lot of feedback from some of the people that spoke. Our client met us Thursday with some of the concerned neighbors, and based on that timeline, we really haven't had a chance to regroup and reassess some of the questions, concerns they had. So I'm here today requesting a 30-day holdover to, I guess, two meetings so that we can put our heads together and submit back to staff so we can have a clear report for the next meeting.
What will that date be?
That'll be the June 20th meeting. We would need any information back by June 7th in order to process it.
That won't be a problem.
Any questions from commissioners? Anyone else here to speak for this?
My name is Gil Champion. I live at 112 South Georgia. It backs up to this lot. And what does the holdover that he's asking for mean?
It means that if granted, we will, he will have time to submit additional information, and we will actually hear this application at that meeting. And at that time, you'll have an opportunity to speak out for it or against it.
Okay.
So you can either, you have the right to do so now, or you can do it at that meeting. It's at your discretion.
Yeah, we're totally against changing the B2 to B1 in our neighborhood.
Okay.
We think it's gonna just hurt us more than help us.
All right, sir.
Do you know when a meeting will be reassigned?
Right now, if it gets granted, it'll be the June 20th meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Welcome, sir.
Hey, Margaret. What's the issue with Lot 2 and Lot 3?
If you'll look behind you, this triangular-shaped piece of property here was actually created back in the 80s. There is a note on the plat that states this lot can only be used in conjunction with this lot. This property is not part of the subdivision, and because of the note on that plat, we would at a minimum need them to participate or give approval to include this in this That's actually...
It's a house.
A house. This one here. It's the first residence fronting Anne Street, north of Government.
So this is basically a deed extension?
It's a note on the plat, which of course then is under the commission's purview.
Any other questions, my commissioners? Thank you. Let the record show Ms. Denson is present. Item number two, 431 Azalea Road, West Mobile Masonic Temple subdivision. Both parts recommended for approval. Is the applicant present? Are you in agreement with staff recommendation? Applicant is present and in agreement. Is there anyone here to speak for this? Anyone here to speak against? Thank you. Item number three, Spring Hill Village subdivision. Both parts recommended for approval. Ms. Sessions is recused. Is applicant present?
Mr. Valas is recusing as well.
Kathy Sherman, this is Andrew Prescott. We're with Burton Property Group here on behalf of the applicant. We had submitted a PUD back at the end of last year, which the commission approved. We earlier this year submitted an amendment to that application as we were acquiring approximately 30 feet from our adjacent property owner, Regions Bank. In connection with our submittal of that amendment to our PUD, the comments were requesting that we add Regions Bank as a party to the PUD and include their lot in the new subdivision that we were drafting. So we held over at the last meeting in order to attempt to obtain Regions' consent to that inclusion. We've not been able to come to terms to include Regions. There are no changes being taken place on their parcel. All the improvements and the approvals we were requesting pertained to our parcel and the 30 feet we were acquiring from Regions. It's my understanding, I guess, the staff had wanted to include Regions in our PUD because there is an access point between our two parcels that exists today, and it's going to continue to exist. So our request today is to ask you to approve a one-lot PUD as opposed to requiring Regions to be part of our PUD and to approve our subdivision application. And I guess our further request would be that if you're unable to approve our one-lot PUD, that we be held over another time.
Why is everybody looking at me? Kathy and I had several conversations this morning, and then I had a couple of conversations with Margaret. We have approved, let me say this, Regions is agreeable to the subdivision, and that's the most important thing. To take 30 feet from Lot 2 and put it to Lot 1, we have to have a subdivision, and Regions is willing to do that. The PUD, like Kathy said, is required, or we asked for both lots because of the cross-access. We have in the past, and I know there was one, I believe it was the VA Hospital huge parcel that's been before us multiple times, that on Range Line. We have approved PUDs in the past without including another property if the changes to the PUD do not have any impact or change any conditions on that out parcel. The last time it came up was the Volunteers of America out on Moffett, Ziegler Boulevard. So you can, you have in the past approved this one-lot PUD because Lot 2, the Regions lot, will not have any change. The curb cut will be the same to O'Sheil Road. The access from Lot 1 to Lot 2 will be the same. Regions does not want to participate in the PUD. You can proceed without them.
Questions by commissioners?
I have a question for staff. I guess, in the past, we've had PUDs that have had two different property owners to them. Okay. I just, I guess that's just why it confused me a little bit, so, okay, that's what I needed to know. Thank you.
Any other questions, my commissioners?
Another question for staff, then. If we did consider the one-lot PUD, would that change the write-up that exists?
The only distinction I'm seeing so far is condition number one, retention of the table on the site plan, providing the size of Lot 1, both square feet and acres. And condition number four, revision of the site plan indicating this setback for Lot 2.
That condition would remain, it's already included in the subdivision, so we would be cut off?
Correct, but it doesn't need to be on the PUD.
Is the applicant following these potential changes to comments?
Yes, sir.
Agreeable to them?
Any other questions, my commissioners? Anyone else here to speak for this? Anyone here to speak against? Thank you. New subdivision applications. Item number four, 112 South Broad Street, Broad Almiria subdivision, recommended for approval. Is the applicant present? Are you in agreement with staff recommendations? Applicant is present and in agreement. Is there anyone else here to speak for this? Anyone here to speak against? Item number five, Quincy and Cedar subdivision, 162 and 64, board on Anne Street, recommended for tentative approval. Is the applicant present? In agreement with staff recommendations?
Yeah.
Present and in agreement. Is anyone else here to speak for this? Anyone here to speak against? New planning approval applications. 1503 1529 Wolf Ridge Road, Heritage Gardens. Mr. Cameron abstains. It's recommended for holdover.
Mr. Chairman, the staff has reviewed some additional information and can recommend approval subject to conditions, I believe, are at your places. The following findings of fact, 1 through 3, regarding appropriate transportation and access, not creating an undue traffic hazard and in harm needed with appropriate development. The recommended conditions are that the one-lot subdivision will be required, reflecting the boundaries as depicted on the planning approval, which is site plan specific, and that the applicant be advised that the dedication of adequate right-of-way for the future planned major street will be required. Also, retention of the buffer, provision of a photometric plan prior to issuance of building permits, and placement of a note on the site plan stating that any changes or scope will require a new planning approval.
Good afternoon. Jerry Bird, Bird Surveying Company, 2609 Halls Mill Road, here for the applicant owners. The concept of Heritage Gardens, as stated, is just to provide the families of loved ones an alternative to in-ground burials by creating the mausoleums. And that would, we're proposing four mausoleums, and in conjunction with that, a 30-by-30 gazebo that would use for assembly or to, I mean, assembly for any kind of little service or gathering right before entombment. The, also, just for the weather. Get out of the sun, get out of the rain, whatever. Of course, this type of development is certainly in nature. Not heavily be traveled, no heavy traffic would be added to Wolf Ridge Road, even though it's planned for the major street plan, and it is only like 500 feet from Moffett Road, which is major street plan. The usage out there would probably only be one or two times a week. The site itself is in excess of 22 acres. The 200-foot buffer, natural buffer that was left on three sides, it's about 11 acres, which leaves us about 11 acres in to develop without even proposing to go into that. This first unit only entails one acre. So there's quite a bit of future expansion, which anything in the future will have to come back here for further approval of that development. We feel like it'd be a good use for the property. Shouldn't disturb anyone, shouldn't disturb the neighborhood, no traffic, no kids running up and down. So we happy to answer any questions, or I think there's two or three people from neighborhood or that's just interested in the development. We can hear from them.
Any questions from commissioners?
Mr. Bird, if it were to get approved, are you okay with the changes that the staff made on the recommendations today?
Yes, that's fine.
Any other questions from commissioners?
Hey, how are y'all doing today? My name is Zachary Cotton. I'm one of the homeowners in the subdivision, which you guys are planning to make this mausoleum. My only thing I would like to come down here and say is I believe it would drive down property values within the neighborhood. It's already a low-income area, Moffett Road. My wife and I just bought this house. And to put a mausoleum in a neighborhood with families, it, one, I feel as though would push away, you know, future families and people who are wanting to start a life there and grow the community there on Moffett Road and have the income increase and have the area increase in popularity. I really feel like, other than that, though, it will drive down property values of the current homes and people who have homes there, meaning investments will be lost, such as my own, such as many other neighbors that we have talked to within the neighborhood and have also voiced their concerns that their investment in their home that they have purchased and/or lived in for many, many years will be next to nothing, having a mausoleum not very far off.
This is on Wolf Ridge Road?
Yes.
Do you live on Wolf Ridge, or you live on Moffett?
I live right behind, or right in front of. I live on Lloyd's Lane, right off Cusky.
I think he may be referring to the next one.
Yeah, I think, I think you're, these are, this is a...
For the mausoleum?
The mausoleum's on Wolf Ridge Road. There's another application on Moffett Road that's not a mausoleum.
I'm here for the mausoleum, and I feel as though it would drive down property values for their surrounding houses.
What's your address, sir?
4212 Parliament Avenue.
Say that again? I'm sorry.
4212 Parliament Avenue. I just wanted to come and voice my concerns here today.
Oh, but you don't live in the subdivision that abuts this, what you're saying in general?
I do live in the subdivision, if I'm not mistaken. I got the letter, right off Cusky Lane.
Did he say the Cusky?
Wolf Ridge. That is within our neighborhood, if I'm not mistaken. We are right there on the corner, 4212 Parliament Avenue. So right there within that big area.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I apologize. I feel like there's many families who live there with both younger and older generations, and to have, I personally wouldn't want to remove my family into, next to a cemetery. And I just bought this house, so, first house my wife and I have ever bought, and now there's a museum of dead people fixing to be put in. I'd kinda like to sell my house now, and I'm probably gonna get a very significant decrease in property value because of it, and everything that I've done to my home will be just for nothing.
Can I comment? If I'm looking at a map that shows the, there is a connector that could technically go into that property, and it's sewed R1 and as yours, or residential. That's not gonna open up. At least, that's not part of their plan. So it's not, you're not gonna have any connectivity to the cemetery or mausoleum. And there's a big buffer. It's huge. I mean, most developments, they're not as generous about giving that kind of natural buffer. It won't be touched. I hear what you're saying, but if this was to develop into single families and they wanted to connect in, then your argument about having reduced values might hold true because you'd have traffic coming and going from Wolf Ridge and Moffett. It would become a pretty good cut-through. That's not gonna happen with this development. And there are examples where cemeteries abut residential, and this is not to be taken lightly. They are quiet. You don't get noise. In Spring Hill, there's a very nice cemetery that abuts homes that go for igoodles of money, and it's right in the community. So I don't see the negative as much as you're portraying. I understand your sentiments about it, and if they were asking for a cut-through, I would say that would be a problem for your neighborhood, and that stub is there, and they could have lobbied for it.
Let me, I agree with Ms. Rich with one exception. It's not, whether the next, if a residential developer came in here, they would ask for that connection. I think we would require that connection through that neighborhood, through connectivity, through those street stubs. So I think a condition of a future subdivision would actually require that connection to Chesterfield. Again, that would drive more traffic, and it just seems like a good use. I was actually surprised as to the zoning, because I recall an apartment complex bidding this year ago for a tax credit apartment project. I didn't see it in the conditions, but when I first looked at it, I thought it was gonna be zoned R3. I'm surprised that it was R1, and I could see some future zone change requests on here that would probably be more offensive to the neighborhood than this use. So I'm in agreement with Ms. Rich on her thoughts.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
So, are you concerned that they're going to develop the buffer?
I'm just concerned with having a mausoleum anywhere within the 50 yards of...
It won't be within 50 yards, but it's actually a little over 300 yards away from your property.
Perfect. Works for me.
Yeah, and there is a large buffer. Usually, I agree with the city councillor, and she is correct. The buffer's in there.
Awesome. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, sir.
Really appreciate it.
Anyone else here to speak for or against?
Good afternoon. My name is Patricia Johnson-Moore. I reside at 1600 East Chesterfield Drive, and I'm here against the rezoning of that property.
It's not a rezoning.
According to the website, Investopedia, and after speaking with several local real estate agents, there are five pertinent items listed as property owners' rights, namely, the right to enjoy, the right to control, the right to exclude, the right to possess, and the right to dispose of their property. As property owners, some of us purchased our homes 20-plus years ago, and others as recent as a few months. Our decision was made not to purchase in a business area. At the time that our properties were purchased, our main consideration was for our enjoyment and a safe community to raise our families. We can all agree that none of us, including those of you who sit on this planning commission, would enjoy having a cemetery in your backyard. Those proposed mausoleums are nothing but burial sites for the rich in our neighborhood, our community. There are many other properties in Mobile County zoned for business where a cemetery could be placed if needed. We, the residents of Chesterfield Estates, are seriously concerned about not being able to enjoy our properties as we have to this point. Examples of this enjoyment? My mom and I enjoy sitting on my back porch, getting fresh air, and watching nature and the birds and the squirrels chasing each other. My neighbor's grandchildren are outside enjoying their trampoline in their backyard. Another neighbor is enjoying his pool. We are also seriously concerned about the lack of care of some cemeteries in the Mobile area. We spoke with an on-site councillor at another cemetery who stated that all sorts of criminal activity takes place at some cemetery sites. That includes drinking alcohol, sex counters, drug sales, and prostitution. That includes drinking alcohol, sex counters, drug sales, and prostitution. If the proposal for the rezoning is approved, it will pave the way for the current owner to conduct other business on that site. Rezoning the property could have immediate and long-lasting negative effects on the quality of the lives for all the citizens in Chesterfield Estates, well as the Botero era, and it could also devour properties. Therefore, we are requesting that the Mobile Planning Commission preserve the rights of the citizens to enjoy our properties and deny the request to rezone the property from R1 to business.
I think we're definitely on the wrong...
If I may, let me finish, please, if I may. I talked with at least seventy-five-plus percentage of the neighbors in the Chesterfield Estates subdivision, and I have had petitions that they all signed that said they were not in agreement of that zoning change.
But we're not, this lot is not being rezoned.
Pardon me?
It's not being rezoned.
Not a rezoning. It's a planning approval.
Okay.
There's no...
Like for churches and schools, that the zoning of the land, the classification of the land is not being changed.
Okay, the classification of the land may not be changing, but what you're putting there is something that we find offensive. That property actually backs up to my backyard on Chesterfield, right across the fence line.
Right, and if it goes to an R1, you'll get fence to fence and clear cutting, or some trees might be left. This is going to leave a natural buffer, a large natural buffer. Can we have what that footage is from backyard? They can't get in there and do any change.
As it stands now, I did talk to the neighbors, because I did do this survey, and there's already activities and stuff going on back there that I was not aware of, that I heard from some of the neighbors. I think that, yeah, it might be a good business sense for some people and a good, maybe private mausoleum for others, but that's not why we, if I had, if that thing was there at the time I bought my house, I would not have purchased my home. And I cannot see someone walking in saying, "I wanna live next to a cemetery, I wanna live next to the mausoleum." That's not why I purchased my home. Who can I leave this with?
My name is Edward Harvey Anton Jr. I live in Chesterfield Estates, sixteen sixteen Raleigh Court. The mausoleum as proposed would actually back up to my property. I noticed, Ms. Rich, that you seem to be a strong proponent. Do you have a vested interest in having the...
No. These are firsts I'm hearing about it.
Okay, so my question would be, as a small investor, what would be your impression of me buying a plot to put a cemetery in your backyard?
It's pretty quiet if there's a huge buffer. I really have stated my sense on this.
Buffer, no. I'm not interested in having a cemetery in my backyard. I bought the property, not only my personal property, I have three others within two blocks and a fourth property about a quarter of a mile away. I certainly did not buy with the anticipation or expectation of a cemetery being in close proximity, and I see no net positive that would come from, particularly for me as an investor, should I decide to sell any of my property. Thank you.
Mr. Harvey, I was just gonna, I also don't have a vested interest in this development, but I'd have to think it's suitable for up to a hundred and twenty units. The low-density zoning would allow a hundred and twenty units developed there that would have access through that stub out into your neighborhood. And I just know if that application was before us today, this room would be packed. It'd be far more than three or four of you questioning this use. I just really, and again, I back up to a cemetery as well, so you can ask me the same question, but I just don't see this use as offensive from a planning standpoint, is what you're stating it is, especially with that significant buffer. I can't tell you another application that's come before us that has had that large a buffer. Honestly, I can't remember one at all, which is very beneficial for the neighborhood.
You mentioned a small number of us who were here today. We only got notified, what, five days ago?
No.
There's a lady, and there's some other people up here that got...
And there's a petition.
Two days ago. No, no, two days, they got their notice two days ago.
That's another thing I was gonna ask. The developer, the owner that is gonna take over if indeed this proceeds, have they reached out to you to show you the plans or anything?
No.
I would highly recommend that that take place prior to any vote that this body does for everybody's sake. So, I would, you know...
I think what you're hearing from the commission up here is what we're seeing is a very small piece of the property being proposed to be developed inside and leaving a tremendous buffer. I think what we're seeing is that the folks that back up to it, you would not see any change at all. You're gonna still see the green space that's in your backyard, because the piece that they're doing is internal, and they are leaving a very significant buffer around you. Most of the time, we're seeing buffers of five feet or ten feet, and this looks to be a buffer of over two hundred feet.
Mr. Chairman? Did we ever get the figure for what the width of that buffer is?
The proposed buffer is two hundred feet surrounding the north and west and southern property lines.
So, a two-hundred-foot wooded area.
That is two hundred feet to be left, says natural wooded buffer. Give you some perspective, the lots adjoining are a hundred and twenty-five feet deep, so that the buffer is the depth of the lots here plus an additional seventy-five feet. And we could require a fence up to that buffer? Staff would not necessarily recommend that, because you have to disturb the buffer in order to construct the fence.
So, one final comment, is it safe to say that should I decide to invest in a mausoleum and your percentage of you would have any objections?
Not with a buffer like that.
Okay, I'm the fourth nay, but I had some other neighbors say that there's more people from the neighborhood up here.
Could you give your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Elaine Swanson. I live at fifteen oh eight Stratford Court. I'm on the cul-de-sac down in the bottom left. I bought this property to, for investment property. I've been working on it for a year, I'm still there. And anyway, Pat Moore, my neighbor, came by yesterday, told me what was going on, because I hadn't seen my notification, and my first instinct was, ooh, and then it was like, but if it's not gonna affect my property value, what do I, what do I, so I said, all right, go out on the internet, check out some things. This is from two thousand seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen. This was U.S. News and World Report made the twelfth, two thousand seventeen. These are quotes. "A cemetery either connected to a church or non-dimensional will put off home buyers, whether they believe in ghosts or not." Okay, this was realestateagent.com, April the twenty-fourth, two thousand nineteen. "Having a cemetery doesn't automatically affect the home price, but it shrinks the market. It does have potential to drive down home prices. Many people consider it taboo to near a graveyard, which shrinks the market." And this was the biggie for me. This was Realtor.com, February sixth, two thousand eighteen. "According to research by Realtor.com, the median home price in zip codes with a cemetery sink about twelve percent lower than similar homes in other areas without a collection of corpses six feet under. That's just about the same rate on prices that one would experience with a homeless shelter nearby." Now, if they put it back there and my home value went up, I have no problem with the ooh factor. I agree that it would be nice and quiet, but it's gonna drive prices down. The research is out there. These were just the quickest hits, as soon as I looked up cemeteries and home values, and I don't want it, because it's gonna drive my home price down. And I bought it for, I bought it for an investment, and I don't wanna lose twelve percent on my property. And that was from, that was two years ago, so the price drop might be more than that now. And as far as the buffer goes, two hundred feet isn't anything. You've got a little bit more than two hundred feet right here, that's nothing. And I already, like the neighbors were saying, I know when I bought my house, there was a squatter in it. So, you put that place back there with a nice, pretty thirty-by-thirty gazebo, and you will be inviting some unsavory elements. But my big thing is to drop in my home price by at least twelve percent, that was two thousand eighteen.
Questions or comments from commissioners? Thank you, ma'am. The honors rep wish to speak? You don't have to, but you can.
Certainly, I can't speak to economics, but I could do a reminder that if we do a subdivision, if anyone does a subdivision on this, they could clear the lots all the way back to the property line, and the home could be built, one- or two-story home could be built within ten feet of the back property line. You could do the same thing with a three-story apartment building. That would probably be more offensive than what we're proposing. Music could be played in the subdivision from seven o'clock in the morning to ten o'clock at night, loud. That's within the, within city code. You have to turn it off at ten o'clock, if they do. If not, you can call the police, and they'll get out there maybe at ten-thirty, eleven. But anyway, we thought that this was a very good use, very quiet use, and should not offend the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. You can't, you're not allowed to, well, the court, no, 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 ma'am, according to the rules, the owner has the opportunity to respond to any negative comment, and that ends it.
Is it my understanding that only four people can speak against?
Both sides, actually.
No, ma'am, I'm sorry.
That's why a meeting would be good.
Other questions or comments from commissioners? Thank you. Side will be taken up in deliberation.
I have one more thing to say. Getting a five-day business, five business day notice for something like this was kind of appealing to me, and also with people, because the head of the attorney thing, seems like there should be a better way for the planning commission to get the information out to the citizens rather than giving them five days, five business days.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, 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 ma'am. It's duly noted and will address with staff. That's a... Item number seven, new rezoning implications.
I need to recuse on this one as well.
Valish recuses. Thirty-eight oh nine Moffett Road, recommended for tentative approval. Is applicant present? Are you in agreement with staff recommendations? Applicant is present and in agreement with staff recommendations. Is there anyone else here to speak for this? Anyone here to speak against? Thank you. New group applications. Item number eight, persons developing subdivision south side of Halls Mill Road, recommended for tentative approval, and sidewalk waiver recommended for approval. Is applicant present? Are you in agreement? Applicant is present and in agreement with staff recommendations. Is there anyone else here to speak for this? Anyone here to speak against? Thank you. Item number nine, Longleaf Gate subdivision, phase two. Subdivision, PUD, and zoning, all recommended for approval. Is applicant present? Are you in agreement with staff recommendations? Applicant is present and in agreement. Is there anyone else here to speak for this? Anyone here to speak against? Thank you.
I have a question about, as long as we're on this, for staff. This was for us, and there was something about the ownership of the property for egress and ingress. What's the difference on this one?
For which piece of property? For the part accessing the, here?
I don't remember exactly what the issue was, but...
Yeah, the private road, part of the private road in this existing subdivision had been purchased by someone, and he controlled the ability for the people wanting to develop this property to get onto the property through the private road. They came to agreement during the previous application, and I would assume, however, I do not know if that issue continues resolved or not.
And we can act on it without that confirmation? Because they don't have access onto Gervi?
I can't answer that question.
Is that a legal issue? I mean, shouldn't the staff know, or shouldn't the planning commission know?
We could request that, or you could condition approval based upon the provision of evidence that they do have right to access.
Okay, because I would want them saying that they get in there and start working, and then they demand to come out on a street they don't have access to, and we helped create that. You know what I'm saying? By virtue of giving them the permission, okay? But that's not something the staff can show this commission right now, but that's been resolved, because it was enough to stop it last time.
That's correct, because the person who owned that right-of-way actually was present at the meeting and expressed his concern, and then he met with the developers, and they were able to resolve it. So, I would assume since the engineering firm that is working on this application for you is the same as previously, that they would have that knowledge and that continued coordination. If someone is present to speak to that issue, they should come forward to the podium perhaps.
That would be good. Does the applicant can verify that publicly?
My name is Al Finley, and I am with Newberry Engineering, located at two-five-three-five-three Friendship Road in Daphne, Alabama. It is my understanding that the owner of the right-of-way had spoken with the group at Horton, and that had been resolved. I don't have anything with me presently that would confirm that, but I will, it's not a problem to get it.
Okay, so we made that a condition? That would be something that...
Yes.
Okay, I appreciate that.
I think we should recognize Mr. Finley as a proud father of a tremendous student athlete that'll be attending Ole Miss next year. Great job.
Any other questions or comments by commissioners? Thank you. Next item, item number ten, Kabira Chemicals Incorporated, recommended for approval. Is applicant present? Are you in agreement with staff recommendations? Applicant is present and in agreement. Is there anyone else here to speak for this? Anyone else here to, anyone here to speak against? Thank you. That now closes public deliberation session, will not enter into our deliberation portion. Item number one, is asking for holdover until the June twentieth meeting. I'll make the motion.
Second.
Properly seconded. Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Items held over till June twentieth. Item number two, four thirty-one, Azalea Road, subdivision and planning approval, both recommended for approval. Is there a motion?
Approved based on staff recommendation.
Second.
I need finding of fact, planning approval.
The subdivision.
With findings of facts, we're under the, of all of it, A, B, and C?
All right. Properly moved and seconded with proper finding of facts. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Item passes? Item passes. Item number three, Spring Village subdivision, recommended for approval, both subdivision and PUD. Ms. Sessions and Valish recused. Is there a motion?
Move to approve subject to staff recommendation for the subdivision, and with regards to the PUD adopting the finding of facts with revisions to notes one and four.
Properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Hold on. If you make your motion, in addition to removing those conditions, the motion needs to be that removing lot two from the PUD and removing those two conditions.
That's correct, yeah. Making it the one lot, the one on the PUD.
Motion amended and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose. Item passes. New subdivision applications. Broad Elmyra subdivision, four-twelve South Broad Street, recommended for approval. Is there a motion?
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose. Item passes. Item number five, Quincy Davis subdivision, one-sixty-two and one-sixty-four North Anne Street, recommended for tentative approval. Is there a motion?
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Oppose. Item passes. New planning approval applications, fifteen oh three and fifteen twenty-nine Wolfridge Road, Heritage Gardens. Is there a motion?
I'll move forward subject to staff recommendations along with the revisions to this planning approval, that one subdivision required boundary is depicted. Application provides sufficient dedication for the adequate right-of-way. The buffer, as per the photo metric, and Margaret, there's one other one right after that.
Just the note on the site plan stating any changes to the plan, which includes the natural buffer, or the scope of operations will require a new planning approval.
Along with that condition.
I'll second that motion.
Can we have some more to discuss?
Properly moved and seconded. Any discussion?
I would like to recommend that there be an opportunity for a representative from this development to meet with those residents that will be abutting, even though it's a generous buffer. But there's... And notification was short or appeared to be short, as was recommended, I mean, was mentioned, and a little dialogue will go a long way. So that's... I would like to see this held up until they have an opportunity to do that, at least one or two meetings out, because it's summer, give ample time to plan a date. I've taken it out of my packet to give to the council representative. It's in District One, so perhaps he can go a meeting with interested citizens and residents and the developer, owner, whoever is representing the project. So that would be my recommendation.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Does the representative of the developer have any qualms about having conversations with the community?
I do want to make, since it was brought up during the public hearing, the notices were mailed May first. Well, I think it was made clear that there's a level of frustration, and somewhere in the middle is good truth. But again, I've seen where sitting down and maybe even showing conceptual drawings of what it's to look like, what kind of security they're gonna have, questions could be answered that aren't under the gun in front of us to make a decision. And I think they just need an opportunity. I represent the city council, and I would like to say that I believe that council representative or any council representative would welcome that opportunity to work with citizens and the person, the people with the project. I think it goes a very long way, and I hope that that would be honored on something, a change like this, so...
Mr. Chairman, I just want to point out, after the remarks of the neighbors, it's evident that they are not gonna be interested in anything other than keeping a wooded area. I mean, that's what two of them said. They would... So, I mean, I don't know if requiring that is gonna be fruitful.
Current motion on the floors for approval. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Oppose?
I guess I'll oppose, because I think a meeting would be great.
Item passes. New rezoning application, thirty-eight oh nine Moffett Road. Donna Dukes, Mr. Valish is recused. Recommended for approval. Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve. Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Oppose. Item passes. New group applications, south side of the Halls Mill Road, persons development subdivision. Parts A and B will take as part subdivision application, recommended for approval. Part A, is there a motion? Properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Oppose. Item passes. Part B, sidewalk waiver is recommended to be granted. Is there a motion? Properly moved and seconded.
Yeah, because it's... Yeah, you have a portion in there that's denied. That's the frontage on the west side of the existing guardrail. That portion is recommended to be denied.
Yeah, I would like to amend my motion to include the denial for the second portion that she just mentioned.
Okay. Motion amended. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose. Item passes. Item number nine, Longleaf Gate subdivision, phase two, subdivision, PUD, and zoning are all recommended for approval. Is there a motion with finding of facts for A?
I'll make that recommendation for the subdivision, PUD rezoning, and I guess there's the facts we have to give out on the rezoning. Yeah, I'm trying to find them. Somebody will read those out. The C, D, what is it? C, D, and E? And then if we could also add a condition about having access out, showing proof of that prior to any disturbance or however the permits would be granted administratively?
Properly moved and seconded. Any discussion?
And also, I'm wondering, because I'm trying to think at Long Gerby, whether there are sidewalks there. They come out to it. I realize they don't have access to it, but would they be required to do that amount of frontage of sidewalk?
It's on the other side of the sidewalk. It's on the other side of Gerby, and it's probably not practical there. That's very, very wet.
Yeah, I mean, it's showing it as a...
Yeah, very, very wet on the... There's a sidewalk on the other side of Gerby that traverses the whole.
To the school?
That's correct.
So they would have to come in for a waiver? Or are you granting that now? Because they didn't make waiver, so that's why I'm wondering. There's no sidewalk waiver application before the commission.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose. Item passes. Item number ten, PUD and planning approval, both recommended for approval, Kamira Chemicals Incorporated. Is there a motion?
Move to approve subject to staff recommendation, adopting findings of facts, U D, A, B, C, D, and E, and adopting finding of facts for the planning approval, A, B, and C.
Properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Oppose. Item passes. Those are all applications for other business. I'd like to just take a moment to recognize Valish for his service. We have a certificate of appreciation. Mr. John Valish is hereby officially thanked for over eighteen years of dedicated service as a planning commissioner for the city of Mobile, Alabama, done on this sixteenth day of May in the year of our Lord, two thousand nineteen, and three hundred and seventeen, year of the founding of the city of Mobile proclaimed by Mayor William Simpson, the one-hundred-and-eighth mayor of the city of Mobile. Thank you, Mr. Valish, for your service. Meeting adjourned.